Call to order the Grant County Board of Commissioners work session for June 13th, 2017. Please join us for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice our own. And salute the flag that's standing in New Mexico, with its simple verbiage, friendship among my enemies.
Are there any changes need to come to the work session agenda?
Yes, sir.
Can I get an approval?
So moved, on second.
There's a motion, a second, to approve a work session agenda. Any discussion on the motions, seeing none, all those in favor, so you can find the same aye?
Aye.
The general purpose of the work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution 1701, we welcome the public to attend, however, there will be no public input at this meeting. First item on the agenda is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, and we have Aaron Sussman with Bohannon Houston.
Again, my name is Aaron Sussman. I'm with consulting firm Bohannon Houston. We were contracted by Grant County last fall, last summer, last fall, to complete updates to Grant County's comprehensive plan. The last update to the comprehensive plan for Grant County was 2004. So this was overview, this is an update that's supposed to take place in at least every five-year cycle. Misha has asked me to give a brief overview of the plan, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that all of you may have. So I wanted to begin by giving a little bit of background for those of you who aren't as familiar with the purpose and content of a comprehensive plan. The state of New Mexico has a series of guidelines that are outlined by the Departments of Finance and Administration. They govern the scope and parameters for a comprehensive plan. The plan that Grant County has pursued was funded through a grant by the Department of Finance and Administration, which again governs how the plan is to be developed and its ultimate purposes. So again, a comprehensive plan is, it's an overarching, a high-level document. It begins with an inventory of existing conditions. The idea is that if we can identify long-term trends that Grant County will face over time, and we can connect those trends to issues and opportunities by a series of subject areas, those include economic development, transportation, housing, land use, capital facilities, public services, environment and natural resources, we can provide policy guidance that can help inform the types of investments that Grant County makes over time, and inform the type of funding opportunities and grant, and support grant applications as they become available over the coming years. The purpose of this plan is not to reinvent every planning effort that has taken place in Grant County in recent years. One thing that was really remarkable about working with Grant County and working with staff and other stakeholders in the region is that there is a tremendous amount of planning efforts and studies that have taken place, that provide an awful lot of guidance, strategies, and recommendations that we could build upon. Our planning effort here was not an effort to reinvent every economic development study or housing study that has taken place, but to build off of those efforts, to validate them, to provide additional policy guidance. So I say that the 2004 comprehensive plan was out of date and needed to be updated quite thoroughly, but there are a number of other planning efforts taking place by the county, by the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, that did inform our planning process to a large extent. As I mentioned, this is a plan that should be updated at least every five years per New Mexico State guidance, but the most effective documents are those that are updated regularly that are treated as living documents, not something that just sits on a shelf, but becomes an active tool for commissioners, for staff, for the public to refer to, and if there are changes, if there are items that come up, that becomes an opportunity to reassess the validity and our understanding of Grant County, the recommendations that are contained in the comprehensive plan, and an opportunity to address those over time. And so, before I get into the substance of the document, the last thing that I want to reiterate and make very clear is that this is a guidance document. It provides a series of policies, strategies, recommendations by subject area, but it's not a regulatory document. It doesn't mandate particular actions, it doesn't force Grant County's hand on particular issues, but it does provide guidance that again connects those long-term trends that we evaluate to potential strategies and investment ideas. It's very broad-ranging, it's, again, it's a comprehensive plan, it does not provide the level of detail that is always necessary to address every issue in Grant County, so it's, I think, important to understand that it's a high-level plan, it looks at those long-term trends and issues, but with this kind of document, it's impossible to address every single specific action that Grant County can and should take over the next five years, but it does provide that sort of policy framework. So there's a few major items that I want to discuss in terms of the scope and breadth of the comprehensive plan. Again, this is an effort that consolidates and builds upon previous planning efforts, I think it validates that work. There is some tremendous work that was done through the Economic Development Master Plan, the Southwest Regional Water Plan is also a very useful tool, that is the reference document on water resource issues, not the comprehensive plan, but the comprehensive plan can validate and support those issues and provide additional policy guidance, so that's a distinction there. But again, the breadth of planning efforts that have taken place in Grant County and Southwest New Mexico is really remarkable compared to other regions, so we were not looking to reinvent that, but to, again, put, value that work into context and help bring things, tie things together and make sense out of it all. I think it's also important to mention that each of those planning efforts that we referred to went through their own outreach processes as well, and so this is, again, kind of a consolidation plan, and it looks to build upon all the work that's taken place. With all comprehensive plans, the place where we start is to look at long-term trends, growth projections, demographics. There are some important issues that Grant County is going to need to confront in the coming decades, and the comprehensive plan becomes a way to frame some of those challenges. First and foremost, again, with demographics, unlike a lot of more rural counties in New Mexico, according to the projections that are utilized in this plan, Grant County is not expected to lose population, is expected to remain fairly steady. There's a lot of counties in rural New Mexico that are experiencing and are projected to experience substantial population loss, that's a real challenge. In Grant County, that challenge is a little bit different, it has to do with changing population dynamics. The likelihood is that there will be an increasing number of senior citizens, there will be fewer participants in the labor force, and so that informs a number of other issues, things like the types of services, particularly for senior citizens, that need to be provided. It affects the type of housing options that are going to be desired, it affects the type of transportation and infrastructure that needs to be available for residents who are less likely to drive, and also changing our thinking, so it's not always about kind of commuting patterns, but thinking about access to services and amenities to a large degree. We heard again and again, from a housing perspective, that affordability is an issue. We were able to validate that to a large degree by digging into the census data and looking at the burden that housing costs place in Grant County relative to incomes, as I think everybody's aware, incomes are not particularly high in Grant County, but housing costs are disproportionately high, particularly for renters. And so when we talk about things like demographic changes and the type of housing, household compositions that we're likely to see in Grant County, like in all of New Mexico and all of the United States, I think we're likely to see more single-person households, adult, two-adult households with zero children. There's not a lot of options across the entire state for those type of households, and so that's an issue that we can bring to the forefront in the comprehensive plan. I think the last point on housing and affordability is we're able to demonstrate how much of a burden, of a cost burden, housing is for renters in Grant County, and as homeownership rates decrease across the country and across New Mexico, that's also a consideration that can be addressed through things like an affordable housing plan. Silver City has won a recommendation in the Grant County Comprehensive Plan as an affordable housing plan for Grant County as well, that would enable public-private partnerships and opportunities to pursue types of housing that might meet needs that are not currently met in Grant County today. Another element is economic development, that's of course always an important issue. Again, as I mentioned, this is not something where we wanted to reinvent the wheel, there's a lot of excellent economic development analysis, studies, and plans that have been conducted in recent years in Grant County that are very much still valid, but not only through the outreach process that we engaged in, through stakeholders, through analysis of changing industries and employment by industry, there's clearly opportunities here, there's needs to diversify the economy, I'm probably not going to say anything at this time that's going to be news to anybody, but that's part of the point of a comprehensive plan is to validate those issues and document them. Things like recreational tourism, obviously investments in renewable energy are a major topic across the state, and there's a lot of opportunities in New Mexico, or in this part of New Mexico and Grant County. Workforce training opportunities, capitalizing on the presence of a university, these are all issues that are discussed in the comprehensive plan and connect back to things like the changing workforce dynamics and the need to attract and retain younger workers, the fact that there's a lot of high school and college graduates who leave the region, I think is not news to anybody either. So what do we do about that in terms of creating opportunities, creating amenities and job opportunities, training opportunities to encourage people to stay, are all things that are discussed in the comprehensive plan. And then the last major topic that I want to touch upon is land use. One thing that's very, very clear, and I want to be very clear about is that there's no discussion of zoning in this document, right? This is a policy document, it's not a regulatory tool, zoning is not recommended, it's not described in here, but what we did come across in previous planning efforts, and even back to the 2004 comprehensive plan, this discussion about the need for additional guidance when it comes to development decision-making, we heard that from stakeholders as well, is that the region, and Grant County in particular, could benefit from additional guidance on the types of development that are most appropriate in some locations versus others. So what we have developed is a transect planning-based approach for land use decision-making in Grant County. And so what that means is we've identified a spectrum of districts or location types across Grant County ranging from urban, places like the town of Silver City, to natural, places like US Forest Land, neither of which Grant County has jurisdiction over, although Grant County offers services in urban areas. So one of the things that we talk about are the types of public services that are most appropriate by district type, types of infrastructure that's most appropriate by district type, the level or intensity of development that's most appropriate by district type. And so again, this, what we proposed does not mandate how individual property owners can use their land, there's nothing that says that people can't make the same land use decisions tomorrow that they made yesterday, so be very clear about that. But this does provide a tool for the commission, for staff, and opportunity to engage in terms of feedback and development agreements between staff and developers about what are the appropriate types of uses and activities by locations across Grant County. And again, this is guidance rather than regulatory. So that is an important component of this as well. There's a lot of other data and elements to the comprehensive plan, I wanted to touch on some of the major points. At this point, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that any of you may have.
Any questions yet?
I do.
Go ahead.
I have some questions, I just have a question.
Yeah, say, do you have any questions? Yeah, is what I said.
Okay.
You want to, I think we should wait till the end.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're going to wait till the end.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So, I think, I think I have questions of you.
Okay, so, do you want to write one?
Yeah. Yeah, we weren't sure about the wait till the end, sorry about that confusion. First, thank you very much. Thanks for preparing this plan, thanks for making your presentation. Since your last topic was zoning, I feel it important to say that not all of us consider zoning such a bad word. To me, it's similar to taxation, nobody particularly likes it, but it can enhance all of our lives if we do it well. I think with zoning, hasn't been enforced, at times we've seen the really negative aspects of that. The location of the Echo Helmet Factory is the thing that stands out the most in my head on Bullard Street, that was a horrible violation of zoning. Zoning protects me and others who live near that former plant from having to put up with inappropriate uses. So, in future plans, I don't think you have to go to quite the same work to avoid zoning. Second, you mentioned it's just a guidance document, I think you would agree that a guidance document nevertheless is important, that future ordinances we might adopt or resolutions will be advantaged if they're consistent with this plan, and they'll be disadvantaged if it can be pointed out that they're inconsistent, does that make sense?
I think that was very well said, yes.
So, so I don't think we should consider this just something to move along and get done with, it's important. And I think its value as a guidance document, and this is, again, somewhat of a rhetorical question, because I think you'll agree, is directly proportional to its acceptance by the community as a valid document. That to the extent that the community thinks it was well-done and reflects public input, for example, it will be better accepted, and to the extent that that is not the perception, it will perhaps have less value as a guidance document. Does that make sense also?
Yes, that's awesome.
Okay, if you see any holes in what I'm thinking, let me know. This all seems clear to me. So that, those two things are leading up to a motion I would like to make, which is that we remove this item from Thursday's agenda, that I do not believe there has been adequate public input in the draft comprehensive plan. I greatly appreciate the questionnaire, the survey that was done. I participated in that, I put out, worried about it, but the final draft was the next point at which some people could see, hey, was my input taken? Did somebody get something really wrong, right? And I, as a commissioner, had 10 days from when I saw that it was notified by email that it was available, and I was requested to send it out to people I thought might be interested, and I've sent it out to a handful. Obviously, I didn't send it out to enough, and I didn't give enough time to those I did send it to, because I've heard from many constituents that they haven't had time. Because I think it's really important that this document have public buy-in, I would like to know if you think it would be, in a practical sense, problematic to delay approval until July?
That's a question that I think that staff needs to answer better than myself. What I can say, how I can speak to that, is the process that we followed is very much consistent with the guidelines that are set forth by the state. In fact, the level of outreach that we conducted is probably equivalent to or exceeds the level of outreach that's conducted for comprehensive plans with the level of budget and, that was available for this particular planning document. So, I would question the concern that the outreach process was insufficient, but I will defer to staff on whether, on the question about time limits.
Would you say specifically that the outreach about the final draft was also adequate? Because that's the part I'm talking about, I realize the survey went out with plenty of time.
I would say that the level of time, the amount of time that was available is not inconsistent with what's generally afforded for this type of document and this type of document.
It was less than two weeks.
It was two and a half weeks from when it was posted on the Grant County website.
I got that.
And we also accepted comments up until June 6th.
After an extension. Right, it was June 2 when I was first told about it. Am I correct?
Commissioner Brown, yes. June 2nd was the date that was on there, but because I received information from both you and Commissioner Edwards that you did not have time to look at it, we extended and accepted their cases, the input through them. And I had another person that had reached out to me who I also expressed that we would accept their comments, and still, they have not had a chance to review it, and now that's three weeks.
Since you have the mic, would you say a month delay would have a practical effect that we should be concerned about?
So, when we, when I, when I went and applied for the grant through NMFA, we do have a year to get that done, so that, that's kind of our timeline in order to get the $12,500 back from the grant. That was awarded in September, so, you know, it kind of depends on how the commission can get things pushed through.
July sounds adequate, however, it sounds within a September start date for a year.
So, you are recommending that we put it back out for public comment on the final draft, and...
That's correct. I would recommend two more weeks.
So, two more weeks.
Which gives two weeks to incorporate.
Three weeks that some of the people that I know that you reached out to still haven't had a chance to read it, is two more weeks going to give them that much time?
Well, they're telling me it will, and I'm not, I don't feel it's my role to say, sorry, you blew it, in this case, with a plan that's going to last at least five years and possibly 10, why not be sure?
It's not a decision to make.
But that's my recommendation.
A proper motion would come Thursday to table, because you didn't put this on, you would be allowed to withdraw anything you put on the agenda, but not staff. Now, staff could withdraw this if they chose to. I don't, as soon as they want to, they're going to wait for us to make our decision. So, how do you think?
So, yes, so first, I do want to thank Misha, county staff, and Bohannon Houston for their work on that comp plan. And I just want to say that the comments that I have are a combination of my own observations and a significant amount of constituent input as well. And I just want to say that when I emailed Misha and asked him how long I had to comment, and he said the comment period was closed, I was like, oh, okay, well. So, I read the comp plan through a couple of times, but I was also in Santa Fe at a water summit, and so I didn't have a lot of time to spend on that initial reading, and the only feedback that I could give Misha was, well, it's not a bad plan, but it's not a good one either. And so, I spent a lot of time in the last week or so figuring out what it was that I didn't like about the plan, and also incorporating a lot of the public feedback or constituent feedback that I got from people about this. I'm not going to go over again what Aaron said about what a comp plan is for, but I will say that I think that this is an essential document, and it's a functional roadmap for the county for a long time to come, and I do hear what you're saying about the five-year update, but it's been 13 years since we updated, since we've done this work. So, first, I've heard this from a number of folks in the community, and their concerns are that because Bohannon Houston has a significant financial interest in the Gila River diversion, and given the level of controversy in the community about the diversion, that Bohannon Houston was not an appropriate contractor to do our county planning documents. Secondly, I personally reviewed the comp plans of the four counties closest to Grant County in population in the state, which are San Miguel, Segula, Tatos, and Luna County. San Miguel's plan is a 2014 update of their 2003 plan, and it appears that their plan was done in-house with the help of a local community organization. The other three counties have redone their comp plans in the last two years, and the online presence of the contractors they used indicated a substantial depth and breadth of community planning experience here in New Mexico. Bohannon Houston, on the other hand, is an engineering and spatial data firm, and I could not find anywhere on their website that said community planning was a significant piece of their business, not in their services offered section, nor in their portfolio section. That isn't a bad thing in and of itself, but for something as important as this comp plan, I feel very strongly that we have an obligation to contract with an organization whose primary focus is community planning. Next is the lack of broad public input. I know from personal experience how hard it is to get the public to participate in these processes, but I also feel that it's our obligation to do everything we can to ensure participation, and it can be done, as was demonstrated by the Health Council, who had over 5,000 responses to their last community wellness survey. Now, this is obviously a different type of project, but I think in addition to the online survey and the pop-up interviews, we should have held public input meetings in every community in the county, and had a follow-up meeting in every community in the county to get feedback on the draft. I've participated in numerous planning processes, and they almost always include a component of public conversation. I would much rather be able to tell my constituents that we did everything we could possibly do to get input and no one showed up, than that we barely made an effort to get public input. I also think we need to reevaluate how we engage stakeholders in this type of process, and how we identify who community stakeholders are. A partial list of organizations and/or agencies that are deeply involved in community building and not invited to the table as stakeholders in this process are: the Arts and Culture District, the Midwest Region Arts Council, the Town Silver City Manager's Office, GRIF, the Rain Chamber, the Volunteer Society of the Health Council, the Wilderness Alliance, the Grant County Community Foundation. Now, they may have received an email about this, but there was no direct communication with them about being a stakeholder. Finally, I wanted to think about the five comprehensive plans, both in a broad-picture sense and in details. I didn't have time to compare the details of every section of every plan, so I randomly chose housing, and what I determined missing from the housing section of our plan is there's no introduction as to why it's important for us to, as a county, to think about housing, there's no mention of green building, innovative housing solutions, or acknowledgement there are multiple at-risk populations that need housing other than seniors and homeless people. In the broad-picture sense, there's a curious lack of vision, critical details, specific objectives, broad solutions, and most important to me, a sense that the plan is for and about the people. I believe significantly broader community input would address these issues, and so I concur with Harry that we need additional time for community input. I would advocate, actually, that we have longer than two weeks, and we could talk about that tomorrow. I do recognize that we all have different ideas about what a useful tool is. However, this plan is meant to be a comprehensive and to be a tool that many different people, counties, staff, elected officials, agencies, and organizations will be using over a long period of time, and so it is incumbent upon us to make the very best plan that we can do. In closing, I will want to share an observation. As resources, both human and financial continue to shrink, it is harder and harder to make thoughtful decisions, because thoughtful decision-making takes time, which many of us simply don't feel like we have enough of. We have a tendency to not make time when we're feeling the pressure of not enough staff to do the job, more and more responsibilities, so much work to do, and of course, we've all been taught that time is money. As a result, what I see more and more happening is that our decision-making is being driven by dollars, not what is best for the people that we serve. I think this is an important part to think about in this particular context. I don't agree that we need to have a tremendous amount of public input on every R and B that we put out. I think our experience with the Cancer Center is a prime example of how some of the things that we do in governments directly impact a huge number of people in our communities, and it's incumbent upon us to have the most thorough public process, public input process that we possibly can. I would actually like to see us table the comp, plan the process, and have significant opportunity for public input over the next 30 days and incorporate that into the final plan. Thank you.
I don't think there was a question there.
I don't think there was.
I was just making sure he didn't have to respond to that. I was remiss in letting the public know that Commissioner Billings is on the phone, and if he has any questions or comments, it would be appropriate now.
Commissioner Billings, did you hear Brett?
Maybe he's not there.
Hello?
So maybe we've lost him? Okay, well, even though Commissioner Edwards mentioned money, I'm going to mention it again. I guess my big question would be, and I don't expect you to answer this today, Misha, or, but if we were to put this off and have more public input, I don't think that's a bad thing, by any means. What I would be interested in...
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh. Ask him if he has any questions.
Do you have any questions pertaining to the comprehensive?
No, I don't. Sorry, I had my phone on mute, so I wouldn't be making noise, and you guys...
Sorry, I had my phone on mute, so I wouldn't be making noise, and you guys hear me. I am listening to everything, though.
Okay. Thank you. So, my question would be, if we did have a public forum, or ask for more comments, or whatever it may be, how much more would our contractor charge us to implement those? And I don't expect that to be answered today. I don't know that that's something you can answer, but we probably could get that by Thursday, I would assume. But there's gonna be some more hours and some more time and more revision, and it's gonna cost something. And I don't know what we got in our budget left in this. So, that'd be a question I'd want answered Thursday, 'cause I'm assuming there's gonna be some motions made, maybe even in a couple of different directions, who knows?
Chairman, could you make your follow-up comment? I would like to point out that the most comprehensive, comprehensive plan of the ones I reviewed was in the county, and they paid $50,000 for theirs.
Yep. I think that's what we paid for this one. So, that's all the input I have today. So, thank you very much for your presentation. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is energy savings performance contracting, and we have Scott Stevens and Mark Valenzuela. No? No Scott Stevens?
I think he stepped out.
That was bad timing on his part.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Commissioner.
My name is Mark Consuela. I serve as your advisor on bond financing. I'll take you through my presentation. Well, here's Scott. Did you wanna, did you wanna go first, or? I think it'd probably be more appropriate if Scott gave his presentation.
That's fine.
Sorry, I walked out to use the restroom. I apologize. Go on in, everybody.
Sorry.
Just in time, right? Geez. And I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to talk with you this morning. Okay, there we go. So, my name is Scott Stevens. I work for Energy Control slash Optera Energy. Optera Energy is our parent company. We're based in Rio Rancho and do projects throughout the state of New Mexico and have so for 35 years, working mostly in K-12 colleges, higher ed, counties, cities, municipalities. This morning, I'd like to take you through a process called, I guess, the IGA ESPC Evaluation. I trust some of you have had the opportunity to go through the PowerPoint that is forwarded to you. I'm trying not to use, you know, a bunch of acronyms, but I will, you know, take you through this from kind of an educational, you know, perspective. IGA stands for Investment Grade Audit, and ESPC stands for Energy Services Performance Contracting. Today, we're here to talk about challenges, and specifically, challenges related to facility buildings and, you know, budget constraints, and a way that energy services can bridge that gap and help entities like Grand County address those issues and rebuild in solar and energy efficiency into those plans. So, that's what we're gonna go over. You know, some of those challenges are financial. From a county perspective, we've got lack of funding, which we all know, you know, you're familiar with, diminishing budgets, budgets change, you know, restrict having to deal with those, you know, pivots, rising utility costs. PNM rates have increased, on average, 5% every year over the last 10 years. There's bond limitations. You can only draw a bond, you know, so many times for specific projects. Capital expense priorities. You've got, you know, different projects that, you know, the county is interested in, whether it's, you know, new buildings, you know, redoing buildings, you know, different projects around the county. And then increased maintenance costs. So, not only do you have, you know, building new things, but keeping older buildings up and running properly. And then we've got technical challenges. Aging facilities of equipment, emergency replacements, you know, things happen unexpectedly, and there's not a lot of time to, you know, plan to fix those in an efficient manner. Increased service calls that go along with, you know, building new facilities. Comfort issues. People are hot, cold, you wanna have, you know, a standard of comfort that's comfortable for your staff. Standardization. You've got old equipment, you've got new equipment. How do you reconcile, you know, staff being able to take care of, you know, different types of equipment? Regulatory compliance. You wanna have clean air inside, proper ventilation. And then... Sorry? Oh, okay. Sorry. Geographic location, you know, obviously, the county covers a lot of miles, not only in town, but outside of town, so there's ways that we can address, you know, managing those buildings remotely. So, fortunately, the state of New Mexico is trying to address these issues. A lot of times, energy efficiency isn't given the opportunity that it deserves, and the Public Facilities Energy Efficiency and Water Conservation Act of 1978 made it possible to provide this energy savings performance contracting mechanism, and it's basically a process that facilitates facility improvements without a need of upfront capital from the U.S. state. So, you can go out a total of 25 years. Based the State Department of Energy, EMDR D, and JSD, has been involved in this contract for a number of years and finally put together a state price agreement that allows, you know, entities to choose, you know, ESCO based on a pre-qualified basis. So, a lot of the upfront work has been done for everybody, and Energy Control is pre-qualified. So, next comes the question, is there an opportunity here at the county? So, what we do is, we take the framework, and I know there's a lot of verbiage here. I'm not gonna go through every single word, but I do want to kind of distill the messaging here. The ESPC is a two-part process, and the first part is the investment grade audit. The second part is the ESPC, which is the actual construction of the project. So, the ESPC is a turnkey design-built construction project, which is a little different than what entities are used to dealing with as far as construction. You know, we act as the architect, you know, the engineer, we do the feasibility upfront to make sure that there are opportunities, so does the turnkey service. There's comprehensive measures, so we tailor it to each building, and further in this slide presentation, we go into each building, and, you know, you can kind of see the differences, you know, the use of the building. There is project financing available, and, you know, Mark is gonna be able to support me and explain some of the different choices that you might have coming up. And the best part about this process is it is a savings guarantee. So, we guarantee the savings. So, at the end of the day, we're on the hook if it doesn't deliver, and that's actually in the investment grade audit verbiage within the contract. So, I will kind of ask you to look to the right of that slide. You see a chart there, and I guess the takeaway is, there's energy savings to be had. Here, you can see what utility costs are. This is kind of a cumulative look at utility costs. You've got your, you know, during the program, you've got your utility costs, you have the costs of the ESPC of the project, and then you have the savings. And in a situation where solar is involved, after the project is done, then you also have, you know, savings of the solar. So, what we attempt to do is build, basically do build a baseline. And if you look far to the right of this slide, you see the model usage. And what we do is, we take a look at all the different buildings, and we've identified seven buildings that will be included in this program, the square footage, the activity, and we do an EY. And this is without even, you know, looking at actual data. We do this by, you know, the decades of experience that collectively we have as a company, and also, you know, hundreds or even thousands of projects that we've done very similar to this. And we model out what the EY is based on the HVAC systems in place, the type of lighting systems, the amount of hours that the buildings are operational. We come up with an EY, and just to make sure that we kind of validate what we think we know, because what comes next is what our estimates are as far as savings. And we go back and actually take utility data, and this is all done, you know, this is part of our cost of the business. So, we, you know, analyze electricity data, nonstop gas data, and come up with the actual EY based on that input. And as you can see, they're very similar. So, that kind of validates, you know, what we know about the building. And then the building, so the definition of the building energy baseline is underneath the current that expressed as an energy per square foot per year. So, that's what this is measured. So, here are the baseline energy allocation. So, this is all the buildings up in the upper left, and I know this is kind of small. I can't see myself. But these are the seven buildings. So, we can see that, you can see that the building makeups are very different, you know, based on the use. Obviously, the detention center, you know, that mid-yellow pie chart has no lot of domestic hog water. You've got food preparation, you know, showers, those types of things. So, you can see how, you know, each building is a little bit different. So, the next slide goes into remaining three buildings, looking at Silver Street, the admin building, and Rose and Mayments. So, here's an example of kind of a quick look at the solution summary. So, you know, the orange is the savings, so we've definitely seen great opportunity for savings based on our preliminary analysis. And I'll just mention, this is preliminary. You know, we, you know, the investment grade audit is the actual engineering process, but again, you know, based on our experience, we see these types of savings as a definite, you know, possibility, and really a strength for us or the county, you know, to decide to move forward. We also incorporated solar into this equation, so we've got four different sites that we've evaluated. And so, the chart on the white shows the amount of KWs that will be produced by the solar, and then how much will be produced by the utility. And what we actually did was re-engineer these bills. So, we looked at the PNM rate, the utility analysis, and created, you know, what the cost will be, and how much lower the utility cost will be for each site. So, we did that for the airport, Silver Street Complex, and then the Rose Department. So, we chose a little bit differently. You know, the solar radiance is much higher in the summer, so you've got, you know, some of the drivers, and then, of course, you've got, you know, gas to use as heating in the winter. So, you know, those fluctuate a little bit, and it's not gonna be the same for each building or each facility. But we've done, you know, careful analysis to know what to expect. And that's really the whole goal of this process, is to, you know, predict with as much certainty as we can, you know, what we can see once we actually do the investment grade audit. So, here's the solution summary. I'll kind of go from left to right. So, we've got, you know, the seven different sites, the building names that we've been looking at, or footage, octopus. And what we've done is broken savings into two separate parts. One is actual utility usage from an S measurement. So, we've got, you know, electric, gas, and water, and then the EY number represents how much we feel we can lower that EY. And then we have corresponding dollar cost changes that we feel will be produced by this program, and then the last column shows the actual percentage. So, as you notice, this is kind of weighted, you know, average. And, you know, we're talking propane, so we weren't able to actually grab the propane numbers, but that's reflected in, so the gas numbers mean zero. But, yeah, pretty strong. You know, we're looking at a 28% reduction, and, you know, solar's a great way to augment, you know, lowering utility costs, although, you know, solar does not equate to energy efficiency, so it really helps to do both. That's actually kind of the first rule of solar, is make sure your buildings are efficient. So, one of the reasons that this program will serve the community, you know, serve the county, is the careful analysis of your aging HVAC infrastructure. You know, your county is not unlike others or other institutions. There's challenges as far as estimating useful life of equipment. Sometimes equipment is running inefficiently. It's cycling improperly, that, you know, limits the time that the equipment will be around. You know, the guys in the facilities can attest to this. This is an opportunity to fix problematic areas as far as heating and cooling zoning. You know, a lot of buildings were designed for certain purposes, and they've been changed, whether it's adding office space or, you know, making, you know, a room like this. I'm sure this is not original, but this room is on point. Energy efficient design, a lot of times, when you go through a mid-process or an R and P process, you know, you may get lucky with having it in your design firm, you may not. And also, the ability to standardize systems. We see a lot of times where efficiency or energy efficient standards are not done. You know, you might have five new buildings that are designed, and they all may have, you know, all different types of LED lights, or, you know, you might have a building control system that is brand-new, but then you have a new building that's designed five years later, it's a different type of system. So, this really sets a roadmap for current and future projects, and not only projects that may happen in the next couple of years, but may happen, you know, about 10 years down the road. Any questions? Kind of, you know, I wanna use this as kind of a framework if something comes up.
Do you have a forum?
I do, to Mark. I'll keep on going, okay?
Sure.
Okay. So, this pie chart represents the savings and, you know, kind of the visual depiction of, you know, what you wanna do with this extra money. You know, this is a guaranteed program, so whether it's debt relief, or, no, I'm sorry, budget relief in a different department, maybe it's a project that the county, you know, wanted to work on for a while, you know, it's a great significant savings. And the pie chart on the, or, sorry, the chart on the white shows the escalating, you know, the utility costs, but also, energy savings along with the cost of loss. So, we structured this, and Mark can speak to this as well. So, this is, you know, there's a debt service on this, obviously, but we structured so the debt service is never, you know, obviously exceeding, you know, the total savings. We've done a little, I think we've built in a 3% escalator, and then also, I think there's a very small inflation rate, but these numbers are very conservative, actually. So, here's the program financials, again, you have a small print error. We estimate, and again, it's all preliminary, but, you know, based on our experience, we see a project cost of, you know, a little over $1 million. The project development fee is the cost of the IGA, and so we see a total project of about $1 million, about $2 million, you know, just going left to right, we've got the years. It doesn't have to be a 20-year program, it can be less. But we can, you know, self-destruct it, so the energy savings are consistent. If you look at, I think, column seven, you know, we've kind of normalized it, so you know which is what it's gonna be each year. And then you can see the cumulative savings, you know, way on the right. Ownout savings, you know, you're gonna be upgrading equipment, so there's gonna be avoided costs. And then there's the N and B cost as well, so you'll know that, you know, this is gonna be measured, you know, year after year. Some of our, some of our customers decide that after five to 10 years, you know, they're comfortable with what they see, and they can opt out of that, and that is a, that is a cost that's, you know, passed on to a certain degree. But again, this is all guaranteed by our company, Energy Control, and, you know, going into the pathway as far as timing for the projects that we've completed this opportunity. Assessment report, the program development isn't the investment grade audit, so we go through all the buildings as an engineer, you know, design program, so we kind of table with different types of energy conservation measures, and they're very thorough. You know, a lot of times, you don't know, you know, where you are wasting energy, and, you know, that's what the process is for, and then the program implementation can be 20, 18 months, depending on the construction and types of projects. This is a collaborative process. You know, we work with, you know, the county staff, with the engineers, you know, our expertise, we've got, you know, just decades and decades of experience doing these types of projects. And also, EMDR reviews the assessment and the recommendations, which I guess some of your staff is familiar, you know, with the folks over at EMDR. And then the measure and verification... over at EMRD. And then the motion and verification goes on throughout the agreement tone, as I shared in the last slide. So I'm going to, it's pretty, it's a lot of detail in here, so that this is essentially the project development assessment, which is the IGA. Actually, I'm having a hard time seeing this. But anyway, so once I audit, you know, we actually measure equipment, we put monitoring equipment on, HVAC equipment, you know, we verify that electricity panels and the, you know, the electricity is available. Engineering analysis, we go through all the different types of systems, we develop energy measures, scripts of work, you know, really look at the ways that we can make an impact. And then, again, some, some types of VCS may not be cost-effective. Maybe there's, you know, film on the windows that could diffuse some of the heat load in certain parts of the day, but maybe that's not cost-effective. So we, but we work with the county and try to figure out, you know, what works best. Another example would be lighting, you know, there could be five different ways to de-lighting and retrofits. We work with the, you know, the customer to find out what works best and, you know, what your interest is. So it's very collaborative, so we come up with a program that makes the most sense. We work with PNM directly to make sure that we're leveraging all the PNM rebates, whether it's a custom program or a prescribed program. It's, you know, we'll facilitate, allocate work to that everything, so, you know, check comes back to the county, and then you can disperse with it, you know, how you wish. You know, project management, and we make sure that we work with facilities to know what buildings are being used and when, and to make sure that we don't interrupt, like for example, you know, for example, the convention center, you guys are having events, trying to compare Congress, that of, you know, these are facilities that are being used by the public and staff. We have a lot of experts do that, you know, as a company. And then the M&amp;B, which kind of got over, but we work with their staff so they understand how to work this equipment properly, to make sure that there's, you know, regular quarterly checkups, yearly checkups. And then really, the deliverable, the final deliverable of the investment grade audit is a cost benefit analysis. So, you know, we go out and talk with, you know, subcontractors and, you know, develop individual projects and elements, and, you know, we really want to foster local business, so, you know, we look directly from, you know, the county folks to state which contractors, which local contractors, you know, makes us to work with and, you know, folks that seem like to work with. Okay, I kind of grabbed it off your head, everybody's. Yeah, good? Okay. So, as far as kind of consolidating, you know, what we've, what we're trying to relay here is, you know, this is a tertiary project, you know, we take ownership, we do the, you know, the analysis, the design bill, the one-pointed contract, there's no finger pointing, it's streamlined, you know, if you think about the opportunity to do these projects at all the different sites that we've been discussing, it's really a pretty tall task to do it within the confines of the way you typically would go about doing these projects. Most of the time, you would renovate an entire building, but maybe that might not happen for five years, or, you know, so this gives you, you know, the kind of the opportunity to kind of do their due diligence, you know, you know, move stores of their facilities, you know, create a better environment for, you know, staff and constituents. You've got a price agreement in place already, you know, a lot of this work has been done already, it's a street one procurement process, there's, you know, a lot of markups, there's all those things that we can review, you know, when appropriate. We're trying to eliminate the risk here, you know, as far as, you know, having a contractor, you know, come out, do a project, and then you may never see them again. You know, we're, you know, we've been doing this for a long time, you know, we've been doing business in New Mexico for 35 years, we're not going anywhere. We've got guaranteed results, and you've got fixed costs, no change orders. Our company's done a lot of work through CS over the last, you know, 20 years, so this is kind of right in our wheelhouse as far as, you know, having that, that one-pointed contact and ownership. And as the last phrase, it's getting you know, turnkey, Ontario will, Ontario Energy is part of, you know, Energy Control. But we will design, procure, manage, build, and measure, verify, so we're doing the whole, whole project, and this is a little, kind of a turnover, excuse me, turnover, Mark, have a moment.
You want to say your question?
Um, yeah, I'm going to let Mark go, and I've got, I think there's maybe one more slide, a couple more, yeah.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The financial options you really have are identified here in Scott's slide. I sent out a, giving you another presentation, and I'll take these through a little bit more detail. Our role here is, as your advisor, we're your fiduciary, so we're agnostic to whichever process you choose, what we're going to push for is to get you the best value. So anytime you're looking at one of these arrangements, there's an imputed or an embedded rate of financing in these deals, we'll tell you what those are, we'll tell you where the margins are, so you all have the information to make the best decision for the county. But I'll, I'll come back up and take you through my presentation in a moment.
Thanks, Mark. So as far as next steps, you know, we hope we can get this IGA agreement moving forward, you know, sometime, you know, this month. You can see the timeline here as far as the analysis, you know, it'll take a few months. It's a loose timeline, there's some things that we can't control as far as, you know, the financing piece, and also, you know, just the analysis, we want to make sure we do a thorough job, so this is, you know, this is the estimate. But, you know, present results, take a couple of months, there's some back and forth. The investment grade audit agreement, which I believe you all do have, has some pretty strong language that, you know, we're on the hook for delivering this. I mean, we're coming to the table here confident that we will deliver those energy savings, and actually, the agreement says, if, if, if we don't deliver those energy savings and you follow through with the agreement, but then we don't deliver, you're not, you know, you're not responsible for the cost of the IGA. So it's just really, you know, puts the county in a, you know, a viable, you know, position where you feel comfortable and follow up fully. So, thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time. If anybody has any questions?
I'm sure we do.
Okay.
Yeah, that's well. Usually ask most of the questions I'm going to ask, and it shortens mine up.
So I guess, one is just out of curiosity, a pretty small matter, your chart of metered usage versus model usage, including the convention center, we haven't had much of a time period for metering usage there, have we?
Um, the meter does, yeah, the meter.
Has it been metering in essentially vacant building?
Um, yeah, we take it, we take it a three-year, you know, I guess, average. So, you know, we looked at, I mean, we don't want to add a date, that's what we reported, but again, you know, this is kind of preliminary as far as.
Well, I guess, my thought is that might lead to greater savings, perhaps. If you've been metering an underutilized building and it's going to be utilized more, we would expect.
Right, right.
Randy, am I missing something?
Right, right. And you, as, you know, I don't have to tell the commission, there's been, you know, some challenges to that, that building. And, you know, for now, we actually do see new buildings as having, you know, sometimes, you know, great, greater opportunities than one might think. So, you know, again, based on size, and also, even only to look at the building controls as well, you know, those are, again, you know, we're looking at trying to centralize some of these functions, because you've got a lot of staff, and, you know, being able to troubleshoot problems before they happen can really be a risk, a very smart risk-averse, you know, approach.
Okay, thanks. Your chart that showed financial projections for 20 years, you said didn't have to be 20 years. Presumably, after that point, our obligation to use paid off, and the savings column is entirely the county's. Am I reading that right? I'm quite surprised, from a marketing standpoint, you didn't include a whole bunch of rows that looked like that, because in two years, we'll make as much as we did.
Yeah, well, yeah, you make a great point. I mean, you know, just, just even as far as solar, I mean, solar panels have, you know, 8%, you know, power up and grading up to 25 years, and that's probably conservative, so yeah, you'll see. You're absolutely right.
Uh, this may be for staff, I'm not sure. We've had presentations about converting to solar from, I want to say 4H, but probably mixing that up with something else. And we identified five buildings that were economically viable, you've identified four, are these the same four as included in this list of five?
Chairman, Commissioner Brown, yes. They, it was Triple H Solar.
Triple H.
And, and five were identified. One of them, we actually pulled off in discussions with, with Randy and Jason, which was the building out at Baton Park. There, there may be just some other issues that were going on there that, that aren't representative. So we didn't, we weren't fully comfortable that there was truly some savings that were being shown there. So this project, as we were looking at, and we were directed to move forward with the, with the PPA on the solar, and then when Scott had already been in contact with us here, and he and I sat down and really talked about, like he said, making the facilities more efficient helps with the, with the solar aspect of it. That's where I kept giving you guys reports, saying that it was slowed down, I hadn't quite gone out to, to bid on the, on the PPA, because we were trying to figure out through his initial audit, whether it was worth going this, this far with it. And so those solar are still rolled into this program, so they didn't go away, we just didn't move them forward.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could just interject, I want to go over the PPA, you know, again, this is, we're still in analysis phase, and this is all preliminary. We will and expect to, you know, detail different options as far as the solar, I mean, the PPA still might be the best strategy. There are a lot of, you know, different options out there. So, I mean, it's all positive. I mean, you know, there's benefits to a PPA, there's benefits to that workup.
Are you saying that if we went with somebody else to do the solar, you'd still be willing to work on the energy efficiency stuff and come at us with a similar proposal?
It wouldn't be similar, I mean, in the sense that, you know, there's advantages to kind of have an comprehensive approach as far as the financing and everything.
I wasn't sure if I heard that you were willing to do that, or not. You want to present it as a package?
Yeah, I mean, that's the way we've seen, you know, most of our customers get the most value from the process, because again, you know, that analysis, that consultancy aspect of it, you know, doing the due diligence of, of pre-study, and then the board and county will have the opportunity to look at, you know, different options, but it, it's in the framework of, you know, doing, doing the project how it wants, and, you know, timing that, having it all work at the same time.
Commissioner, right. So when we looked at the solar, we were looking at strictly going with the PPA because of not having necessarily capital lines to pay for. Now this project, and, and Mark will get into more of the financing background, that gives us the option of full ownership, but what Scott is saying is that we don't necessarily have to even own the solar if it makes more sense to still go out PPA, they'll still do that for us. They can run a PPA even through their corporation that has somebody else that owns that solar instead of us.
Thank you, that, that makes sense. My last question might not be for you, it's about procurement. I'm a little confused how this works. We've had the analysis, we've had another presentation, presumably, under this, we issue one RFP for this whole turnkey thing, we don't have to do two, like you said, but we would still be issuing an RFP, right, that you would be one of the bidders on. Am I understanding this?
No.
Thank you.
No, actually, one of those is a state contract, it's, you know, I think it was the Secretary of State, EMRD put out this RFP, so we are pre-qualified, pre-qualified, so, yeah.
Beautiful, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, right?
Questions? What's the expected lifetime of the panels themselves?
The panels themselves have an 8% output rating up to 25 years, that's the warranty duration for the panels. And then, inverts typically have a 15-year warranty, you can also buy additional years. And there may be some stipulations within the financing options to buy American-made panels, so that could be another kind of factor, just as I started.
So we'd be financing some portion of this for 20 years, that's fully warranted for 15, is what I hear you say?
With, with the inverts, correct?
Yeah.
So we can build that in, I'm just saying, when we stated, you know, electronics only last, you know, so, not to say that they won't die, but.
Right, good question.
Yeah. So, I don't, I don't know anything about this stuff, they're probably asking so many questions here. The 80% over the life, so do they start out at 100% and go down over time?
Is, is this step kind of degradation, so, that's a great question, I'm thinking. And we have a certain rated stipulation that shows that it will step down, it will, you know, year two, it'll just drop to 80, that's like, so.
Okay. And would I be correct in assuming that your financial figures do not take into consideration that PNM is going out for another 5% rate increase in the next year?
Yeah, like I said, that's a conservative approach. You know, we want to stay conservative, I mean, when it comes to these projections, especially before we have a chance to, you know, dig into, you know, buildings themselves and go to finalize project numbers. But actually, next year, I think PNM is going for an 8% increase.
It was an 8%, yeah. Okay, my last question is, and, uh, this might really reveal my ignorance, but do, given that we have so much land and dust, do those panels need to be cleaned for efficiency?
Great question, yeah, absolutely. So, but pretty low maintenance, the way that the panels are, you know, set, they, they will kind of drain, sometimes there's a collection at the bottom of the panel, that's, you know, different, that's different frames that, you know, collect us from out, but, yeah, that, that's usually included in the cost of the project, so maybe an annual, you know, cleaning, that, that happens during the analysis phase, and also subcontractor as far as the, you know, solar company.
Okay, so would be included in the final, final financial analysis?
Yes.
Okay.
If you bring that up, it definitely will be.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
I was one of the questions at the beginning, so.
That's right.
So on, on the net savings, so we're looking at doing this and we'll be able to save about $18,500 a year, $15,500 a month. So, so if you started adding on extra warranty to inverters and stuff, that comes out of that, right?
It's good we can go back to this preliminary audit, and it's been negotiated, I mean, a lot of these things, just like the M&amp;B is, just like, you know, if you want to add, you can add extra, you can add 10 years to the inverts, you know, at that cost. So, you know, we'll just, we'll go through those different permutations and figure out what works best.
Just do a cost benefit analysis, negotiation.
So if you don't do a private-public partnership on the, on the solar, or whatever other type of, yeah, the PPA, how do you take advantage of the subsidies?
Good question. You know, the way that, first of all, there's two things that are happening, the cost of solar panels have decreased dramatically, just to give everybody, for example, reference, I was actually a PDP distributor in 2007, panels were $4.20 a watt, now they're $0.50 a watt. So it's gotten, you know, huge, you know, lowering of costs. That coupled along with PNM, you know, rate increases, you know, they, solar more affordable, and actually, we talked about rate parity, where it's, you know, more effective to, you know, to buy or to create your own power than just to buy from these hotels. So even though we're not taking advantage of the federal tax credit, which is the only credit center available right now, it's still, still is a greater, greater value.
I had my house looked at for solar, and even with the subsidies, it was right at here to miss whether it was worth doing at all with the current pricing. I'm probably going to do it again once the pricing goes up, but, so without the subsidies, it was a dead deal immediately, that's why I'm asking.
Right. Well, you know, we're dealing with the common scale here, you know, so larger projects, first off, then we can consolidate, you know, you have a time horizon, I'm not sure what time horizon you're looking at. Oftentimes, the residential market, they do try and study higher efficient panels, which can be 30% more. So, again, there's, there's quite a few factors that may have made that not as appealing, maybe is it.
So we would want to use panels that are not as efficient?
It's kind of a, it's, it's a little bit of a, it's a discussion. It's kind of a, it's a little bit of a, it's a discussion. Yeah, change your question, yes, because even the premium that you pay for the higher efficient panels, how weighs the bad debt? There are some companies that, you know, solar is, you know, people can market it to, I'll just put it that way.
Okay. I don't have any further questions. Deon? I don't think, is Billy there yet?
Billy's there.
I heard him say he disappeared.
Yeah.
I heard him get off, okay. Sure? About your last line of question, which I found interesting. Is all of that, do you think, irrelevant if they're guaranteeing the savings? Yeah, I mean, I just think it's going to depend on, that was one of my other questions. I mean, how close is this $18,500, is that a really close number?
Again, it's based on our, you know, estimates, but again, it's definitely based on, you know, years and years of working on these special programs. We've asked, you know, staff, of course, you know, questions about tools already from a local and regional standpoint, so, again, yeah, it brings us all in order.
I guess, Commissioner, it was more a point of just making sure that we got the most net savings, that's all I had after. It's the private partnership thing, private-public thing was the way to go, because this number to me, making it the biggest is important to me. And I realize $18,000 a year in our world, I mean, we can hiccup and spend that in this county, so...
But when you think 20 years ahead, it was $180,000 a year, something like that.
Well, so...
Once they're paid off.
370. Yeah, and then you've got four to five years, that potentially you could have several, several more of those eight.
That's right.
I'm probably not going to be here to know about it, because in 25 years, we're all going to be really old. Really old. But, yeah, and I guess that's, when you bring the final plan in, with you and Mark, that's going to be my big thing, is what that real number is, which I obviously agree that this is an estimate, so, hope it doesn't get lower. Any other questions? Mark, do you have anything else?
If I could take my presentation off.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. It's the one with the mogion pottery on the front. Slide two is just a bit of information. I know there's many commissioners about who we are. We've worked with the county for several years. It's the one with the picture of me, that was 10 counties ago.
Number now.
Maybe 20? Okay. Nonetheless, we have offices around the country, and we see renewable energy projects across the country. We have a lot of data on these kinds of energy efficiency, performance savings contracts, and also on doing PPAs for solar alone. So, we see them a lot, we have a lot of good data, we'll help to advise you on what we think the right pricing would be. Slide three is just some of the options that you have out there. You've really touched on a lot of these already. The PPA, the value there is, the private investors that are coming and funding that are getting a 30% investment tax credit from the federal government. And so, theoretically, they should be passing on that value to the county. And so, we'll look at that for, if the PPA is the choice, we'll look to make sure that you're getting the most value out of that tax credit, so that you're sharing in that value. The two others that I wanted to mention briefly, and I'll take it to slide four, are the Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds. Let me skip four, excuse me, that was the PPA. To slide five, it's the Qualified Energy Conservation Bond, and also the Clean Renewable Energy Bond. They're both the same thing, they work slightly different, well, in concept, they work the same, but the Clean Renewable Energy Bond is specific to solar, and it's a program that's funded through the IRS. So, the federal agency we're working with are different. The Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds, which we've actually sold for the town of Silver City, they're funded out of the Department of Treasury, different group, and they provide tremendous value. So, the numbers that Scott is showing you, and Commissioner, Mr. Chairman, you asked about how do you take advantage of the incentives if you own the system, and the Qualified Energy Conservation Bonds are a way to get at that. It was the equivalent to the investment tax credit that the feds put out for local governments. And it doesn't, it's not exactly a 30% tax credit, because governments don't pay tax, it's subsidized financing, cost, or interest rate financing. So, the way it works is, you, as a county, would go out and sell bonds, you would sell them as taxable bonds compared to what you normally do, which is tax-exempt financing, or tax-free. And the reason that you're selling them as tax-exempt, or, excuse me, taxable, is because the federal government is going to provide you a rebate every year. So, what we'll do on your behalf is submit to the Department of Treasury what your interest cost was for that year, and they'll rebate 70% of that cost to you. So, what happens is, you effectively get the value of the ITC just through bond financing. And that's a scenario where you're going to own the facility. So, as an example, on slide six, I'm showing you what happened with the town of Silver City. Silver City did the first Qualified Energy Conservation Bond in New Mexico, and when they went, they did it for their water meter project, which actually was part of the Department of Treasury's Qualified Energy Conservation Bond Program through what's called the Green Community Program. And you have that on your agenda for Thursday, it's a passage of a resolution to create a Green Community Program, and so that's what the tie is here. So, town of Silver City changed out all their water meters, they used this financing vehicle to pay for it, so there were savings coming from the IGA for the entity that did the work for the town of Silver City, like Scott is mentioning, which essentially paid for all the debt for those new water meters. When we went out and took the bonds to market, they sold just over 4.5% taxable, and with the rebate coming back to the town, the town's really paying an effective rate of 1.6% for a 20-year period. And it's just, it's well below market, you just can't get any better financing out there. So, that would be one of the options that we'll be looking for, on your behalf, for this project that Scott's bringing to you. I'm sorry?
Say four.
They sold taxable just over 4.5%, and with the rebate, yeah, taxable, it came back down to 1.64% 20-year period, fixed rate, which again is just, you can't touch it in the market. You can't touch it frankly with any government programs that are out there, like the New Mexico Finance Authority or something else like that. So, it was a really effective way to lower the borrowing cost and provide more value to that bottom line you were just talking about, which is the $18,500 you'll save per year. So, hopefully, the ideas were able to add more value to that savings on an annual basis. So, let me stop there, and if you want to ask any questions about the financing, I have to do that, or if that, we'll just end.
Thank you very much. Before we move on, is there anything else for any of this stuff? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and move into the review, the June 15, 2017 regular meeting agenda, and I'll turn the meeting over to Charlene.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you have four sets of minutes to approve. Those are in your packets for review. Next item, financial reports, item E, approved, disapproved, June 7, 2017 expenditure report. Linda, would you please go over the highlights of that?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have an expenditure report for approval, totaling And included in this packet is some AP checks that I'll go over. One of them is to HCP Systems, this is for April and May Medical Management Services at the Detention Center, for $26,789.8. A check to Hiller Regional Medical Center, in the amount of $200,000. This is for an imaging unit purchase, and this is fully reimbursable, it's through a grant. A check to Occum Engineers, in the amount of $11,884.44. And this is for engineering services on the Rosedale Road and the North Hurry Road Colonias Projects. A check to Southwest Concrete and Paving, in the amount of $23,299.76. And this is for road materials for the CAT projects. A check to the New Mexico Human Services Department, in the amount of $92,921.17. And this is for the fourth quarter contribution check for the safety net care pool. A check to Ride Express Fleet Services, in the amount of $20,778.39. And this is for the April fuel charges. A check to the Solid Waste Authority, in the amount of $40,559.50. And this is for the April tipping fees. A check to Sacagawea Construction, in the amount of $81,786.72. And this is a project payment for the Alice Mesa Fire Station. And also included in this report is payroll checks for pay period 10 and 11, totaling Any questions?
Any questions?
I say, without much warning, one concerns the check number that's listed as the ending check number. Do you want to explain that?
Yes, that ending check number, actually, when we issue checks and if it's a long description, it runs into the next check number, but it won't print it out, because it actually voids it because it's a $0 check.
So, it's a fine check. Okay, I thought, something like that. And then the grand total of the individual checks and electronic transfers is a couple thousand greater than the fund summary total, and I wasn't sure how that can happen.
We are looking into that, trying to figure out what this report is pulling in, so, as soon as I have an answer, we'll get it to you, okay? We'll let you know.
It struck me that, is it possible that some of the fund summary numbers have abatements? In other words, like negative expenses that came back in?
That's what I'm thinking, or a voided check, because it doesn't seem like the items are listed.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Any other questions? Moving on to new business, item F, approved, disapproved, Silver High School Lady Cult Soft House Great Champions Proclamation. Item G, helping seniors stay healthy, project year-end report. Ms. Chris DeBolt will be here to give you the final year-end results of that project. Item H, approved, disapproved, Sapien Creek, 2017 Volunteer Firefighters Annual Reporting for PERA. Please stop me if you have any questions on these. Item I, approved, disapproved, inventory deletion for multiple departments. This was a mass cleanup of many items that have been overlooked. There were some that sparked my attention, and so I asked them to go through and clean up things that have been gone for years, so that's why this is so large. Item J, approved, disapproved, appointment of lodgers' tax advisory board member. There is one vacancy for a two-year term, and we received one, one letter from David Schur to fill that vacancy.
And one option, resume from Jesse Ochoa?
Well, I guess there's two.
So, is that, so what we have is one letter from David Schur by email, and then Jesse Ochoa sent in a resume?
She did what?
They accepted Jesse Ochoa at the last minute, did they pick that up?
They did. Okay, so that's my mistake, because my email said there was one, so there's actually two, Jesse Ochoa and David Schur.
And based on what's in our packet, should we assume that the only thing David Schur sent in was this email?
Yes. So, did the Jesse Ochoa meet the time deadline?
I would have to clarify that. If he didn't meet the time deadline, then it's not acceptable, so, we will have that cleared up by Thursday, or by the end of today, and let you know. Next item, K, approved, disapproved, Hiller Regional Medical Center, appointment of Board of Trustees. You have, this packet was delivered electronically to you, we did not print it out again, because it's 94 pages long, so there was 13 applicants for you to consider.
I printed it out, they started shopping, and I'm not willing to get it.
So, is this the appropriate time to discuss how we're going to move forward on this?
If you want to.
So, how are we going to move forward? So, Billy?
Yeah, I was going to talk, I was going to talk to Billy, I don't know if I necessarily agree with him, but I know that he has asked to have a public forum and a meet and greet with these people, and he's already gone to the extent of asking them about dates. You know, if you all want to do that, that's finally, we'd need to put off, we'd need to have a special meeting at the end of the month to appoint this. If you would be okay modifying that, so that we would select, I would say, five of the candidates for that function, I find 13 to be difficult to manage.
Billy's on the line.
Oh, good. So, let Billy talk.
You want to do it, it's fine with me, I'm prepared to do whatever you decide.
So, how would we, if we did that, how would we, what would the process be by which we selected those five?
So, as a math teacher, what occurs to me is, we all come with lists, and rank everybody, we add up the rankings, and if, let's say, we go from 1 to 13 with 1 being best, we'd say the five candidates who have the lowest totals get invited for this meet and greet, that's how I'd approach it.
So, then what we would do is, pick a deadline to do that, and a date to invite them to come to the public meeting, and then a...
The deadline would be Thursday.
Deadline would be Thursday.
Deadline would be Thursday. Then we would put a date for a special meeting.
And then we'd put a date for the public meeting, and then a date for the special meeting. Or the special meeting and the public meeting would be the same.
To bring Commissioner almost up to speed, what they're talking about is with the 13 applicants for the Board of Trustees, of selecting five applicants to invite to come talk to us. I didn't understand the meet and greet thing, I was going to ask Billy about that, it didn't really, it didn't do anything for me.
So, you want us to each select the top five?
Yeah, rank them all, is what I'm saying. Rank them all, because that makes, Indiana, we add them all up. That makes it fairer, because my 13th will be irrelevant that they were 13th if we only rank the top five.
Right.
So, I would rank them all, add them up, and take the five lowest numbers, and invite them.
But I think Billy's idea about the meet and greet was that the public would be able to actually meet the potential...
Yeah, but I'm not going to cede my authority or my duty to the public to pick a trustee. I mean, they can meet and greet if they want, but...
Yeah, right, yeah.
Billy, do you want to explain the idea of the meet and greet?
Yeah, my idea was that that would be a good place, because there were so many candidates, that would be a good place for us to meet and hear from them all in one setting.
Yeah, I think them talking to us would be a much...
And also, the public seems to have a real interest in, and I understand that interest, and they could come and, perhaps after the candidates had spoken for about three minutes each, to their interest in being on the Board of Trustees and their qualifications, after that period, perhaps the public could mingle with them, and we could, and we could talk and ask any questions privately with them, in a more private setting. That was kind of my idea.
So, just to get this straight, we're going to invite all 13 to come speak to us, or just the top five? That's my, Billy was suggesting, suggesting all 13, I'd like to modify that to be the top five.
I totally agree, and I think we should just go on the ranking of top five, the one that gets the most points, you know, gets...
Rank all of them, rank all of them to be at the top five.
So, then...
I have another thing to say, in my conversation with all 13 of them, two indicated very strongly that they will be dropping out, so I guess that would lead us down to 11. Well, whatever you guys decide to do today, it's fine with me, if you want to drop down to, if you want to score them and determine who the five would be, that's fine.
Now, can you ask these people to get us a withdrawal letter?
Now, can you ask these people to get us a withdrawal letter, or call each to withdraw?
I couldn't hear that question.
Can you, can you have them send us a withdrawal letter, so we don't waste our time on those two individuals?
I will, I will, I will ask them if they are going to withdraw the letter and send a letter in, or contact the county manager's office.
Yeah, they just call Charlene and ask them to fill the letter, that's good enough.
It would be nice to have that by the end of the day today. If we're, if we're just before Thursday. Well, I don't want to be thinking about this on Thursday.
No, what I'm saying though is if they're not, if they're not in there, they just come out of your rankings, they're not going to be ranked. Well, I gave you a list here, we actually have to think about where we rank them, if they're candidates. If they're not, we save the small amount of time. It would be convenient to have them in the...
When, when those two told me that, I was hesitant to give them any advice to that end, because I didn't want them to construe that as that I was encouraging them to drop out.
And you probably shouldn't tell you the truth.
So then can we ask Bernadette, well, how are we going to get them to drop out by the end of the day? Because that's what they want.
One drops out, you just move it in the ranking.
That's what I see. Assuming everybody ranked them. The whole point is to avoid having to rank them, but forget it, this conversation has taken longer than the ranking itself.
Assuming you want to do one through thirteen, not one through...
We'll just go back to that.
So then we also would want to decide what questions, what, what they're going to say to us. Would we not, would we want them all, in other words, what I'm saying is, would we want them all to answer the same question? And maybe the question's as simple as, why should we select U.S. A Board Trustees? Or we should have the same question for our...
That's good enough. So then I'm going to ask, if you don't mind, Commissioner Brown to compile those. I'd be happy to do that, because he's a math teacher.
Because he's the math guy.
And so I'm going to ask all the commissioners to please get those to him.
I'll get them to Charlene.
To Charlene.
Or...
Well, the only need. Getting them to me by Wednesday at five, or that work?
Wednesday at five, it's fine.
Name another time if you...
Wednesday at five.
I'm a night owl, Wednesday at eleven is probably fine.
Well, I was going to get you mine at about four-thirty in the morning when I get out.
That's when mine will come, I know.
Don't do that.
So are you all going to vote on the questions that will be...
I think, I think the question she asked, just tell us why you want to be, what you think you're going to bring to...
I just don't, I need to be on the agenda as well.
Well, we are changing the agenda, obviously. We're not selecting...
I'm trying to keep track of what you're adding, but...
No, in other words, we're deleting, selecting someone.
You're just going to leave it open?
I think the chair has the authority to suggest the question to the candidates.
And how much time are we going to get them to answer?
Five minutes.
One question, five minutes left.
So if I can just make absolutely sure, when you send me your list, I'm looking by the intuitive approach that number one is your best, and number thirteen is your favorite.
Thirteen bad.
Right, so don't reverse the order. Number one's good.
Number one's going to be the same.
So we're going for low point totals. Okay. Billy, is that okay with you? Billy, you there?
I'm here, that's okay with me, I've got to go now, though.
Okay.
And I thank, thanks for your accommodation.
Okay, so what we're going to do, just to be perfectly clear for the manager and the attorney, is we're going to change the agenda item, if I can find the agenda item, from appoint or approve a, approve the appointments to the Board of Trustees. You know what, no, leave that on there, and we'll do the medical, there's only one. So leave K. He is, and he's the last. And L, we'll add, we'll add a new one in there, and we will have a discussion, help me with words, Perry. A discussion concerning the appointment of...
Can we say we have the selection of the finalists?
Selection of five finalists. Yes, yes, yes. So we'll, we'll, actually, what we'll do is we'll announce the selection, really. Well, that's a good point.
That's true.
We will announce the selection of the five.
The selection of the five candidates.
You're going to announce the selection. Is this acceptable, Ms. Lawyer?
I'm kidding, yes, that's fine.
And then invite them to attend.
And what day did Billy have them all be able to attend? Monday, the what?
I didn't see.
Not sure I got that.
I don't know.
I don't know if I did, but I may have already seen.
So you're going to approve/disapprove the five finalists, and invite them to attend?
And then we can vote that, right? We don't have that to be...
So we put that in the agenda for that special meeting, yeah?
We say that we're going to select the one.
I'd like that approach myself.
You can insert the, or you could choose the date on Thursday for your special meeting.
Yeah. Bretten gave a you...
So the special meeting that, that nine o'clock on the twenty-ninth still?
Yeah, time of public access.
Or the, or the Monday, the twenty-sixth? I have a meeting nine o'clock on the twenty-ninth.
I will lobby you on that twenty-sixth.
Perfect. You guys are looking, they come like nine means gone. Nine means... It's not do or die.
I'll actually be out of town.
Right, the twenty-sixth, you'll be gone. The twenty-ninth, a different time. Ten o'clock would be awesome. Because I don't, but we're going to have twenty-five minutes of input, thirty minutes of input, whatever discussion we want to have, however, that would be somewhat limited. Nominations, with a second, and both. How about one? That's even better. One o'clock work for a buddy? One o'clock? I'm asking, I'm not telling, look at your calendars.
He's stuck with password.
Right. So tentative, well, see, he was good at nine, so maybe ten's better. Because I do have him being good at nine. I can make that, that's fine. Let's just do the nine then.
The ten.
Ten, you want to be ten? Okay. Get into my card game on Thursday, but that's fine. All right, so we'll have our special meeting ten o'clock, the twenty-ninth.
We'll interview and select...
I don't think it's a Monday, is it?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's, I just, I don't know why I have to present. My guess is the twenty-sixth.
So it's speak and choose a student?
Is that okay? That's perfect. Okay. I'm going to miss a kid's golf game, but that's fine. Twenty-ninth at ten, with five candidates.
Then the question will be, why should we select U.S. A Trustees?
I'm really comfortable with Bret phrasing that. So close to that. It'll be the same one to everybody. I'll, I'll even type it out, so I don't paraphrase much. Okay, so you guys all comfortable with that? We'll turn it back over to Charlene to continue through the agenda. All right, go ahead, Charlene.
And we'll move on to agreements. Of course, these will change, this is no longer item L, but for dates purposes, it's item L. Approved/disapproved Memorandum of Understanding slash Agreement Number A seventeen fourteen Supporting Community Development of Fort Bear, Grant County, New Mexico. This is the last version, Abby had some additions that she discussed at the last meeting, we've incorporated those, they've been sent to the Village of Santa Clara, they're okay with them, they're going, they adopted them with our changes. So I believe that we're, we're ready to go forward with this now.
We know, so Silver City and clearly and Bear have all adopted it, or they've looked at it or something?
No, I don't believe they have, Chris Silver.
Please. Please do.
Is that on?
If the light's on, it's on.
Good morning, Commissioners and staff. With regards to the, to the agreement, just a clarification, I believe that that was on the agenda for the Village of Santa Clara Council Meeting last Thursday, they did not have a quorum, so I believe it'll be on this week's agenda, which will be the fifteenth. With regards to the other municipalities, I have not done that as of yet, because I wanted to make sure that everyone was good with the revision of the agreement, so therefore, once Santa Clara approves it, and you're in agreement, because obviously Gabe, you took the lead in actually working with us to develop the agreement, then at that point, then I would send it on to the other municipal governments for adoption.
At this point, you know, I'd like it removed for the following meeting, that it will not be passed by Santa Clara. Once Santa Clara approves it, we'll approve it right after, or vote on it.
That would be fine, sure.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
With your sidebar, you didn't hear any of that. While the sidebar, I would be comfortable adding it to the agenda the twenty-ninth if time is of the essence.
That'd be fine?
Sure, let's do that.
That'd be fine.
And I will make sure that I get that back, that information back to Sheila, so that we can make sure, and once that's adopted, we'll notify Charlene, and then we'll move forward with the twenty-ninth.
So we'll put it on our meeting on the twenty-ninth. Okay, ladies.
Any other questions with regard to the agreement?
Well, I don't know, you. The agreement with Santa Clara, we're going to remove it and move it to the twenty-ninth also, because Santa Clara has not passed it. Oh, okay, that doesn't matter why. That doesn't matter. So go ahead and move on to the next one.
Okay, are you ready? Item M, approved/disapproved Agreement A seventeen sixteen Professional Services Agreement between Grant County DWI Program and Chris Helgert Doing Business as a Recovery Management Center. Cindy?
Good morning.
Good morning, Cindy.
How are you? So I could cover this one, and the next one is mine. So this is a treatment contract that we have every year. And, and you know, as usual, they perform, they, they treat, do more treatment hours than we can pay them for. So we end up getting a lot of in-kind service from them, because they won't stop treatment for people. So they're pretty much the only one in town that can really have the capacity to treat all of our, our clients. We're up to about a hundred and forty-five that we're supervising at this moment, and probably ninety percent of them need treatment and are in treatment. So we, our C does a great job, so that's what that one is. The next one is the grant agreement. The settlement you guys approved back in February, you approved it for a hundred and five, that's what we applied for, we received ninety thousand, that's what we got approved for, and we don't have that yet. DFA Local Government Division is down to two employees, so they are, yeah, two program managers, so they've split up thirty-three counties, so they're rushing to get them, she said they should be ready this afternoon, she will scan an email, and they're not going to mail them anymore. We print them out, so they will be here for Thursday's meeting, so you will have that grant agreement. All I had to do was move things around, and we will be funding the Coricantinas this year, so that is still on there, we did not have to get rid of that. Okay? Any questions?
So this is a question, really, it's, well, maybe it's a request. So for planning, for future planning purposes, it would be, I think, really important for us to know the value of the in-kind services that they're providing. We need to know what that's worth. So example, for example, if your contract is worth fifty thousand dollars, and they're providing an additional fifty thousand dollars of the in-kind services, we need to know for future needs that we really need a hundred thousand dollars with the services.
Yes, I agree.
I think it would be really important to have some formal way of keeping track of the...
Oh, yeah, and I have all those, because we put them in our system, and so it tracks the hours for me.
So will you tell us what the value of that is, please?
I will look at it so far this year, we're not quite at the end of fiscal year, but I will show you for the last eleven months, and I will email that to Bernadette, and she can get that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Item O, approved/disapproved Agreement A seventeen eighteen Consent Agreement That Amends Existing Loan and Intercept Agreements With the New Mexico Finance Authority For The Following Loans For Which Pledged Funds Come From The State Fire Protection Funds. These are all loans that the volunteer fire departments have. As you recall, House Bill Four changed the way that fire protection funds were distributed, which in turn impacted the way that the payments were made for these NMFA loans. So what this does is it amends and allows the payments, the payments to be made from the special reserve fund, and then the fire protection funds will then repay the reserve fund. This is the only way they could come up with, with doing that. So if that makes sense.
It's held by us?
It's held by NMFA.
It's held by NMFA?
Uh huh. So, any questions on that? Moving on to resolutions. Item P, approved/disapproved Resolution R seventeen twenty, a resolution amending the approved and adopted budget for the fiscal year commencing July one, twenty sixteen. These are budget adjustments. London, would you go through those?
I am bringing Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There's a resolution, R seventeen twenty, to consider for adoption. There's an intra-budget transfer, the Sheriff's Department, from their capital outlay, they want to transfer fifteen thousand dollars out of there, and put six thousand into uniform and vest, five thousand into equipment maintenance, two thousand into office supplies, and two thousand into, I'm sorry, sit at opposite. We're taking it, six thousand from uniform and vest, five thousand out of the equipment maintenance, two thousand out of office supplies, and two thousand out of management for them, and put it into capital outlay. And this is to equip a, a vehicle that they, that they just ordered. Correct? Okay. And then we have an increase in revenue and expenses in the amount of two thousand six hundred and forty dollars, and this is for the buckle-up and click it or take it twenty-seventeen grant. And then we have an increase in revenue and expenses in the amount of two thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars, and this is for the step grant and the one hundred days and nights of summer. We have an increase in revenue and expenses totaling two hundred and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents, and this is for the twenty-sixteen Stone Garden Grant. And this will be two thousand, a hundred and forty thousand, four hundred dollars in overtime, two thousand and thirty-five eighty in fringe benefits, forty-three thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and sixty-four cents into capital outlay, and forty-five thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars into fuel. So the total sum of this adjustment is an increase in revenues by two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-four cents, and an increase in expenditures of two hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-two dollars and forty-four cents. Any questions?
Where was the caller?
Hold it, shall we look at the question?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we went and checked out the state contract that was ordered out of, in Albuquerque, but I'm not sure which, I think it was Power Department, and that was something that I researched, and being that we need to order police vehicles that are, to have the special packages, that's why we had to order it out of...
Is it still with Park Park? The same vehicle? Because I was, I was told, that's what I thought, but I was told by the people across the street, that they can order it exactly the way we want it now, as of six months ago. So I do suggest that they are in the state contract, that we do business with our own people here in Grant County.
But is mine, is not, they're not able to, that that's the only place we can get that's considered a police interceptor unit, and we'll clarify that, but...
Yeah, let's get that clarified, because I want, I want to see us doing business here with them.
I absolutely agree.
My name is, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have, I did research that before, that we ordered this, and I did get with Jacob, the procurement, and asked him specifically about the contract, and I researched the state contract, and I could not find our local on there. So being that we do need to order police interceptors with a special equipment, that's why we went with that route.
Any other questions on that? Item Q. Approved Disapproved Resolution R-1721, A Resolution Entering Into a Cooperative Agreement with New Mexico Department of Transportation for County Arterial Program, CAP 1-18401. This is to do several miles of single penetration chip seal. Total amount of this grant agreement is $165,188. DOT funds 75% of that in the amount of $123,891, and the county matches in-kind in the amount to 25% match, $41,297.
Do you know when that's going to be done?
Earl?
So is that, do you know when that's going to be done? This is for next year, 2018?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next item R. Approved Disapproved Resolution Number R-1722, A Resolution Entering Into Cooperative Agreement with New Mexico Department of Transportation for School Bus Routes Program SB 7717, 93418. This is to do, whoops, about five miles of single penetration chip seal. And this also is the same 75-25 matched. Total amount is $76,260. 75% match from DOT is $57,195 with the in-kind match from the county of $19,680.
Sure. Everything for Earl. Is there any opportunity in this grant to make that section safer for bicyclists?
We've kind of gone over this before, not with the amount of money. Are you talking about expanding the road or widening the road, or?
He mentions here, striping. That was the one thing that occurred to me. I have no idea how much leeway we have, but if it's conceivable to move the center stripe slightly off-center to create space on one side, I don't know. I just, it's not even my district, but I know folks who bike out there, and they don't, they feel vulnerable.
Yeah, that's understandable. We've gone through this before. Our county roads are not wide enough to accommodate putting like a four-foot lane for the bicyclist and then still have enough, wide enough driving lane on there, because our roads are only 22, they average about 22 or less as far as width, total width.
All right. That sounds like a no.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think, so I just want to follow up on that. I actually cycle out there all the time, and chip sealing makes it even scarier.
Especially in the first couple of weeks.
Right, right. So I know there's all kinds of stuff around, where we do signage and stuff like that, but can the county do something like put up watch for cyclist signs?
Well, we have, when John was here.
Did all the road shares and then we cut it off.
Yeah. The bicyclists actually got together and actually bought some signs too that we put up. We have put them up.
So?
Yeah, like share the road.
So if there, is there some way that we could do something cooperative whereby maybe cyclists paid, if it's a budget issue about getting those signs out there, is there some way we can do some kind of cooperative thing where cyclists pay for half and the county pays for the other half, or something like that? Are you open to talk about that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I'm hoping to talk about it.
So how much will retain that if they want to pay half?
What, what does a sign cost? Like that, a yellow diamond sign that said watch for cyclists? What is that somewhere?
I can get a price on it. But also, you've got to remember, it's not just a sign. We'd have to buy the post and the anchor and the hardware for it too, and those are pretty pricey.
So could you just let me know what the total cost, sign, anchor, everything it costs, and how long does it take to put one in?
Yeah, it depends on how rocky it is. We can put in a bunch in a day if we needed to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments on that one? Moving on to item S. Approved Disapproved Resolution Number R-1723, Resolution Entering Into Cooperative Agreement with New Mexico Department of Transportation for Special Projects, SB 118901. This is to do, looks to be a little over seven and a half miles of adding a six-inch cap of base course, and drainage and shoulder improvements. Same thing, all three of these are 75-25% split. Total project cost $74,433. DOT will fund $55,825, and the county will match the rest in $18,608.
I have a quick question. Are these always, the DOT provides cash, we provide in-kind?
Yes. Item T. Approved Disapproved Resolution Number R-1724, A Resolution Declaring the Intent of Grant County to Consider Adoption and Inducement Resolution Authorizing and Approving Submission of an Application to the New Mexico State Board of Finance for the Project Approval of Qualified Conservation Bonds for the Implementation of a Green Community and Other Qualified Conservation Projects and Directing the County Manager, the County Finance Director, and County Planner to Take Necessary Action in Connection with the Application. It's a very long way of stating what Mark said, that what the green plan would do, and that gives Misha, myself, and Linda the authority to move forward with that application.
This gives us the availability to go into those bonds that are so cheap, as Mark wrote down.
Item U. Approved Disapproved Resolution R-1725, A Resolution Establishing a Green Community Program for the Benefits of Residents of Grant County. This is the second resolution that's required to move forward with that process.
On the prior one, we were declaring our intent to adopt a resolution. This one, we would actually be adopting the resolution. Is that correct? So, okay.
Getting around about way, yes.
In the end, the first one would not be actually adopted until July.
So this is a stopping. This resolution is actually establishing the green community program. The other resolution is giving us the authorization to submit the application.
Right, but what we're doing is declaring the intent, right, in the first one, to adopt a resolution. We're not actually adopting that resolution until July, am I?
I think they're talking about a future resolution.
In the future, so it's giving us the.
Even farther off.
So you apply, and then there's a resolution that comes along later on. New Mexico Finance is the reason.
So you have to apply first, and really, once you apply, is that approved? You pass the resolution that lets you have it?
That's what it sounds like.
I'm glad I'm not the only one who is somewhat confused.
It's just your intent.
Right. Usually, you see notice of intent, it means like the following month you'll be actually doing, not here.
It's giving.
Here, it's an open-ended intent.
You're intending to apply for this. You're intending to adopt any resolution that comes before you, but you're giving us the authority to move that forward.
All right. Thanks.
Item B. Something a little simpler. Approved Disapproved Resolution Number R-1726, Notice of Intent to Consider an Ordinance Authorizing and Regulating the Operation of Off-Highway Motor Vehicles on Streets or Highways Owned and Controlled by Grant County. Happy to have to this fall, let her go through that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the ordinance that I think Mr. Myers has all been talking with you all about. I put together a draft of that and then a resolution of notice of intent to adopt the ordinance. So you've been through this before. The way this works is we have the resolution of intent on now, which just means you're going to consider the ordinance at the next meeting.
That's when we get it here?
At the, right, at the next hearing. Or, excuse me, at the next meeting. Right, so they'll have an opportunity to review the ordinance, which is just a draft right now, but it's really not very complicated. So, but if you do have any suggestions or catch some typos, anything like that, let me know. And also, a copy will be in the clerk's office in the minutes of the meeting. Let's see, if you want to take, if you've looked at the ordinance, you'll notice that I just did sort of the bare bones. I initially started with putting regulation into the ordinance itself, but then I thought about it, and the statute that's governing this has already been changed a couple times. So I thought, you know what, it's already fully regulated in the statute, in that act, and I don't want us to have to go back and revise our ordinance every time it changes. So I thought, let's just leave it in the statute. We'll authorize the vehicles, and then the sheriff's office and other law enforcement can enforce directly under the statute. And so I think it's all already there for us, the regulation of the use of the vehicles. So that's why I opted for the shorter version, rather than basically cutting the statute.
Wait, does it say that? Or is it just a good choice?
Um, we could, maybe down the road, if we see some problems, we could address those. But right now, if you, I think I gave the, is it in there, the statute? I put it on the back for you all. You can take a look at it. And there's also a full penalty section, so it's pretty detailed, the penalty section. So, yeah, down the road, we can look further at that, as long as it's more strict than the statute.
So I have a clarifying question. So as the ordinance is written, we're actually, we would actually be authorizing two different kinds of vehicles to be on the road, correct? All-terrain vehicles and all what is commonly known as a utility vehicle?
Yes, I put, I chose those two because that seemed to be what the feedback I was getting from Commissioners. The other choices, I think, were snowmobile, which wouldn't apply here, and then I think there was also one for off-road motorcycles, which I hadn't received any inputs that that's what, what you all were interested in taking a look at. So I stuck with the ATV, UTV, recreational kind of vehicles.
And I think the discussion we had before our meetings, I think we wanted to remove ATVs and stick to UTVs.
So, so just UTVs?
Just UTVs.
Difficult for me to.
Yeah, because I mean, a lot safer and.
That was my, that's why I was asking the question before. I thought we had had that discussion already.
I mix them up, so just.
Number one, take number one off.
I don't have a lot of experience with them.
So I have a clarifying question, Earl. The statute and this ordinance refer to streets or highways owned and controlled by Grant Can you clarify what that means?
Yes, I think probably what the legislature intended was, there may be situations where we own a road, but we have maybe given an easement, maybe to the state or something like that, so we're not actually in control of the road. That could be a possibility for what the statute was, is referring to or contemplating. I think the idea is that maybe there are circumstances where we would own a road, but not necessarily have control over it.
And possibly vice versa. I mean, I don't know what to deal with Highway 180, for example, but I wouldn't have thought we owned Highway 180. On the other hand, we control.
Offhand, I don't know of any situations that that is going to apply, but down the road, who knows what might happen.
Well, that'd be central to my feelings about this ordinance, I think. Whether 180 is included, whether 90 is included, if we don't own those highways, then I would say they're not included on the face of reading this ordinance.
Unless we have some control over them.
No, but it says own and control.
Yeah, you're right.
It doesn't say or.
You're right.
Which is why that matters a lot, Timmy.
No, it's his.
The statute says and.
I think if you have any concerns about any roads, just check with Earl to see if it's ours or not.
You're the answer man.
I believe 180 and 90 are all controlled by the state highway department. Down there, we don't do any maintenance or have any jurisdiction at all, as far as I know.
So if we pass the statute, they still will be using 180 or 90 or whatever.
Not at our, or not, we don't.
Well, it's already given, I'm not sure you should use there.
If the state has done something.
Okay, I don't know.
You can all read the 180 and then.
Well, I did read the statute, and I didn't come to the same conclusion. Partly because it's not clear to me exactly what owned and controlled is within the jurisdiction of means. Now, what about State Route 15, for example, right? That's a state route.
Yeah, that's still controlled by the state highway department, as far as I know.
Thanks, I guess we're having a little bit of a bill. I don't see that.
What I pulled off Lexis is what's going to go into effect on July 1st, which is when our ordinance will go into effect. But for the purposes of what you're talking about, there's no difference between what's in place now and what's going to go into effect in July.
I was a little definitive, understand what highways will be, what highways and streets will be included in this ordinance.
Of course, it will. It would just be county roads, it's not.
Sure, I realize it's a ton of way, but.
We're just buying the.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
The way I understand, by Mr. Commissioner, the way I understand the statute, the state has already given authority on state highways and state roads. All this is, is giving the municipalities the authority to implement an ordinance in their jurisdictions, which is the municipality streets, the county, which would be county-maintained roads or county-owned roads. But as far as, the way I understand it, and we've had discussion on with other sheriff's offices and that, is that they already have the authority to use it based on the state statute, once the state statute goes into place. So all this is, is allowing each municipality, allow it if they want to. They don't have to. They can pass an ordinance to allow the municipalities to pass it and do it, but it doesn't banning that they do it.
So what is the source of my confusion is that the town of Silver City considered a similar ordinance, right, sponsored by Council Ray.
Right.
And as I recall, that ordinance specified that Highway 90 and Highway 180 within the city would be excluded from that ordinance. How can they do that if the state has given authority to use those roads and state law supersedes town ordinance? I don't think they can.
Yeah, that's.
So you think perhaps it was just poorly drafted?
Yeah. I do believe the state statute is already in place to authorize the use on state highways and state roads.
So, if I understand this correctly, then if we pass this ordinance as written, there will be nowhere in Grant County, except within city limits of Silver City, and perhaps not on any of the N-90, where these vehicles cannot be, is that correct? So they can be anywhere.
No.
Except.
They can't go in half because the speed limit's 60 miles an hour. So it has to be under 55 mile an hour speed limit.
But there's no law against driving under the speed limit, is there?
There is a law against driving more than, I believe, 20 miles an hour.
Oh, is that so? So theoretically, they can still drive 55 to play.
I'm personally not ready to approve a 55 mile speed limit for these vehicles. But you don't, it's already in statute. So once again, the way I recall the statute, it says we can set speed limits. You can set the speed limit of the road that they go, that they can be on. So this all comes back to the same question.
What I said was, I loved it that they would follow the posted speed limit, that we're not going to change it.
Correct.
Correct, correct. And again, Commissioner Brown, it's only going to apply to county roads, and if Earl's telling us that 90 and 180 are not our roads, it's not going to apply to that.
That's not what I heard him say.
I thought he said those.
That's what I heard him say.
He said those were state roads. Yeah, I thought he just said that.
Right, but they're already authorized on state roads.
Oh, right, but we're not, we're not going to be able to affect that. Whether we adopt this or not, I don't believe that's going to, we're not going to have an effect on whether this, they can travel on those state roads or not.
And that was not my question. My question was, will they, if we pass this ordinance, are we then saying that they'll be on every road in the county, except for the roads inside Silver City's city limits, correct?
Or the original roads?
Yes.
Right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner, actually, that's correct. Each municipality has the right to approve it or not. If they do not approve an ordinance, they will not be authorized to use those vehicles in their municipalities. Now, the highway is a different story. They're already approved for the highway, but they will not be allowed to ride in the municipality if the municipality does not pass an ordinance themselves. So if Silver City would have said, no, we're not going to pass an ordinance, then they wouldn't be allowed to, other than, which they're going to be on the highway. And it's going to be a mess, and it's going to be a big thing in the beginning, trying to get used to it.
So even though all our ordinance is doing is talking about county roads, based on what you're saying, then they will be legal on every road except for in, within a municipality that doesn't pass the ordinance, correct?
That's correct.
And because the state law says that you can drive up to 20 miles under the speed limit, there is there anything stopping them from driving 55 or 50 to Cliff on 180?
I actually think the road between here and Cliff is exempt because it's 60 mile an hour speed limit. I think it says in the bill, it has to be a road of 55 miles an hour or less.
That's a change, this could be a, you said this is a change.
Because the version I'm reading, the version I'm reading does not say that. I got the bill in my office. I just take your version? Okay. I'm ready to get my phone. Well, they may have changed.
You could be referring to another traffic law, rather than, I'm just not familiar with what we're...
We'll know by the time we vote on.
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely got some research to do. My reading of this says they will not be able to use 180 or 90 or 15, I believe, unless we authorize it. That's the way I read this, which is different than authority over those roads.
You don't have those roads.
Then it can't be authorized, is the other, that's, so it's just the opposite of your interpretation.
As far as what the state's authority is, I'm not familiar with that, but maybe we could sit and talk. I was also going to say...
Two things. We already have people using them on county roads all over the county. Most of them are dirt, so you're not adding virtually anything. Two, when I was in Sholo a few weeks ago, I think it's almost economic development. They're driving around, I did not find them to be offensive. They're parked at restaurants, they're eating, they're coming there because there's places to ride. And then they get in them and they go back to, or load them back in the trailer and go back to Phoenix or wherever, and the next weekend, maybe they're back or somebody else is back, so.
Mr. Chairman, I have another meeting I'm supposed to go to on Thursday, so I'll be here for the adoption of a resolution. But as far as, it seems like you all have more questions about this, please stop by and just talk with me over the next few weeks, and I will try to come up with those answers for you.
Well, we're not passing the resolution on Thursday anymore. We're only saying that we have the intent of...
You mean that we have the...
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Go ahead.
I don't know how to do this, it's really going to be...
Item W, approve/disapprove resolution number R 1727, a resolution adopting the comprehensive plan for Grant County. Next section is convening as a Grant County Health Care Claims Board. Item X, approve/disapprove May 2017 health plan claims in the amount of $26,464.47. There are eight claims to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of $25,688.47, and one claim to Hila Regional Medical Center Ambulance in the amount of $776. Also, you have under item Y, approve/disapprove indigent burial from Baca's Funeral Chapels. The approval. And that concludes the agenda.
Okay, so we need to, kind of reports. Mike, you ready?
I submit my report to the reporting period of May 12th to June 8th, 2017. Item number one, status of maintenance staying. Item number two, on our detention facility update. Currently, we have three vacancies. Applicants for these positions are being tested currently, and backgrounds are going to be completed. We expect to have those backgrounds completed this week. Interviews will be scheduled for the week of the 12th through the 17th, which is this week. On June 2nd, I attended a meeting with the Sixth Judicial Committee, District Judges, Law Enforcement Officials, District Attorneys, Public Defenders, and Detention Administrators. Just a couple of the items, I think, of importance. One of them was the Supreme Court decision on pretrial release and detention. There was a discussion on that, and also the crisis intervention team concept. We went over both of those, and according to our district judge, July 1st will be, we'll start implementing the pretrial release and detention law that was passed by the Supreme Court. We have been at the detention center, we've been in contact with our magistrate judge, Judge Laney, and we've kind of started participating in that already, so we will be prepared. I have submitted some documentation to our detention officers in the back, so they're familiar with what those requirements are going to be. So I think we'll be okay as far as what that decision is going to, how it's going to affect the detention center. And it has to do with misdemeanors, petty misdemeanors, and also the felony, and how the bonding and how the release of those individuals is going to come about. So if there's any questions on pretrial detention? Okay. Item number three is, that item remains the same, it's our assessment. Training update, again, with the newly hired officers that are going to come on board, we will commence our 160 hours of classroom training. Also, we were notified by the dispatch director that we need to start implementing the dispatch training with our officers, not only the refresher, but the training curriculum, and this is just to continue allowing our detention centers to stay in compliance with the state regulations on our NCIC, which we conduct the background. So we're going to start doing that as soon as we receive our training material. On the inmate support program, we continue with meetings on the agenda items, the inmate art project, grant opportunities, and volunteer orientation and training. On June 8th, the ISP committee will be, we already met on that particular issue, and we're discussing the possibility of having someone come forth as a 501(c)(3) for funding possibilities for the inmate program, so we can do some funding sustainability for that program. So we're continuing to explore that 501(c)(3) concept. A recognition program, we're awaiting nominations for the month of May. One thing that I'd like to do is just recognize all of our officers right now, because we've, the last couple of months, we've really had, we've really been, really been busy. We've been running at capacity, and they've really stepped up, so I'd just like to recognize all the officers at the detention center for coming together and helping us out. Item number seven, our detention statistics, the average daily population from May 12th to 2017 to June 8th is 93, five more than last reporting period. High population males is 83, nine more than last reporting period. Females is 21, so that statistics remain the same. Currently, for June 8th, 2017, there are 98 inmates booked into the facility. On June 9th, 2016 through June 8th of 2017, the average daily population confined to the facility was 88. The average length of stay for this reporting period is 37.08 days. And with the CJA5 report and all the other statistics that I've given you, this shows an increase in activity as compared to last month. Item number eight, on our monthly agency arrest totals, and this is for May of 2017, Silver City Police Department had 66, Grant County Sheriff's Office 30, New Mexico State Police 25, Barrett Police 5, Santa Clara 3, Hardy Police 5, New Mexico Game and Fish 1, Western New Mexico Police had 2. And currently, we have no inmates that are being held at our facility for any, for another facility. Currently, don't have any. We did have some from Wardburg, but since then, we haven't had any more sent to us. Item number nine, the detention facility had 30 district court transports, Division 1 magistrate court had 37, Division 2 magistrate court had 5. Silver City and all the other municipal courts didn't have any. On our medical transport during this reporting period, total 38. Total number of transports equalled 110 as compared to 75 last month. And I've given you some of the causes that I believe were the reason for the increase in the transports that we've had to do. And that's also, in one of those is also the increase in population of our inmates. Item number 10, probation violations equal 33. We have one parole violation. Inmates awaiting transport, certain, transport sentence to a facility or rehab is two. Total inmates charged with warrants is 55, and the total number of special inmates that we have as of May 11th was 17.
Thank you, Ford, sir. None today. Okay, Harold?
We had the final on North Hurley last week. Everything was fine, they've got a small bunch list they've got to go back and do, but they won't do, there won't be anything that's going to impede traffic. Other than that, we've just been touching our chip seal roads, getting ready to chip seal. We will start that on Monday, and it'll probably take us about a week and a half, two weeks, everything goes right to get that done. There is a bridge that the NMDOT is recommending that we replace out there on the Tyrone Ridge Access Road. So I've been working on that. I've got a guy that's going to be down here tomorrow to go look at it and start working on some prices for that, to see what kind of funding I'm going to have to go try and go after to get that replaced. That's all I have.
Okay, questions, Harold?
Out there, it's off a ridge road, it's called the Tyrone Access Road. It's an access road from Ridge Road that'll take you out there just below the mine where the railroad bridge is.
Okay. You want to talk on?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thanks. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Just real quick, talk about the airport, pretty busy right now. Fire season's been a little bit late, but there's a lot of activity from the Forest Service. Rebecca is working really hard of trying to making sure our fees are being collected and that our training is up to date. There are some concerns with the FAA inspection, about 95% of those cleaned up and cleared up, and so ready to move on. We're going to have an emergency generator, it's been advertised to go up to bid, currently awaiting bids generated for the terminal and the runway lighting. And we did, in the last couple of years, had some lightning strikes and that ended pretty much over electrical out there, so that is going to be a big help to us during, especially the monsoon season. She's also developing a movement plan. Everybody that works or is around the airport inside the gates has to have the training of movement, knowing where they're at on the airport, on the runways, et cetera, safety zones. So she's working really hard. I appreciate all the work that she's done. Maintenance, we've cleared up the landscaping at the Veterans Memorial Conference Center. I want to thank the guys, the maintenance department adjacent, for working really hard and getting that now that it's being used, we're making sure that the sprinkler systems and all of that's getting watered and they're trimmed really nicely, so we're making it look, you know, without overgrowth and all that. There were some lights at the courthouse that were out, we fixed those. There was a dryer over at the detention center that was fixed. And that's one thing I want to express about Jason, I mean, he knows a lot of different areas of building maintenance. And I think by him coming on board, it'd just be a great asset for us, saving money. Talked about energy efficiency, we've had a lot of, I've had a lot of discussions with him along with Nisha, about the controls in these, in our facilities, and how they work and how they understand, and how he understands the process of making the energy efficiency, whether buildings are used, and what time are they used, and whether you want cooling in hallways. I mean, just the whole broad of information that he has experience on, and I think that's going to, I think what does go into this energy efficiency is just going to make it a lot nicer. We had some sewer problems at Baton Park, we got those fixed. You know, the park is still, in my opinion, and Jason's as well, it's just become a place for people to hang. We've been getting calls at night, the people are locked in the gates, drug addicts hanging out hiding in the back, and then they call 911 to get left out. I've been working with the sheriff to try to get that fixed. Again, we know it's a walking park, but people still get in. I have no idea how they get keys inside the facilities, and really, I think we need to look at moving forward, what we do with that facility. We've got some people that have purchased some buildings to have activities, and I think if we can allow the public to rent those facilities and maybe us look back. I mean, it doesn't matter if we give, if we, if they're asking for 20 bags, we use 10, they're still 20 gone because they take them. Cleaning supplies, so, you know, before I just say shut it down, I want to make sure that I have all my information correct and get with you and see where, how much dollars we're losing at this facility when it comes to, it's a great place for people to hang out and have parties, but again, we have the conference center, that's what it's for. There's been, the old, the outpost is open now, I think that's an area we can, that people can lease in, in those areas of the mining district. So it's just something to think about. Again, I wanted to sit down with the county manager and maybe talk about some options we might have there. All of our tables are pretty much gone, chairs, it's just too hard because the activities are on the weekends, and we do have people on call, but they're not there 24/7, and so it's hard to see what type of activities going on.
I see exactly where you're coming, and that's why we bumped up the deposit.
Right.
To make sure that somebody goes the next day and counts if Samphit's there, what have you. It was disappointing to see that there was so many broken or missing tables or leaves that, that was disappointing, but that is a billing that people pay for through their taxes, and I think we need to continue utilizing it, we just probably need to work on the process.
Well, I think, I think, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Brown, I think you're right. The fact is, is we need to just find a better way of managing it, and so we're working on that. We're working hard, the guys are working hard, trying to make sure the gates are locked and, you know, so forth, and that they're checked after every, you know, party or every activity that's out there. So we're doing the best that we can. We just think that it could be done better, or we can think about minimizing it, maybe just during the day, not on the weekends. There's a whole list of options that we want to bring to the table, and we'll be back, getting back with you on that.
Are we keeping the deposit?
No, at this point, we're not, if because it's inspected, and if it's cleaned the way it's supposed to be. There's been, Jason and I worked on what we believe the way it should be. We've had, we've gotten with the staff to make sure that they know what's expected of the people who leased the building out. And so when they do that, that's fine, but there's no way for us to tell. But again, it's supplies, it's, there's been some vandalism out there, and so we just, you know, we just need to try to find a way to make it...
Well, I think we definitely need to work on the process. I think that's definitely needs to be done. And we can't control what happened in the past, but we can control what happens between now and, that's the correct. So I think we definitely need to do that and work on that aspect.
Why are the gates ever open?
They're not, because when, when people, but they're not supposed to be open, but the fact is, if somebody has, say, a graduation party and they have elderly that need to be up there, they, we do give them the key, and we require them to go up, drop off, and come back, but that doesn't always happen, and there's no way for us to monitor that at that point.
Have we ever thought of maybe fencing that portion and only opening that front gate and letting the cars in through there and keeping everything else closed?
So there's only a chance just to pipe.
But because I know the next day after our party, there was something going on at the, on the veterans portion, and that gate was open when we got there, and the gate was open when we left, and there was like 25 cars back there. And I think the resolution to that portion is, like, we had talked in the past to put that, put another parking lot on the other side that they can drive through on the armory side. You know, that would, that would definitely help out there, and then maybe we could keep everything locked out if we kind of segregated that portion where the buildings at, and then put the new parking lot on the opposite side. I think that would help out tremendously.
Well, over on the, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Brown, so over on the opposite side too, we have the facilities used in an emergency at Fort Barrett. We worked with Earl and them to put a paved road down there in case they have to wheel beds down there and so forth in emergencies, so, you know, there's options there, we're going to work on. I just want to bring it to your attention and let you know that there are issues. I know I've spoken to a few of you already about those issues.
And trees are locked.
They've been, we're spending more money on locks than we are on the facility itself, so, but hopefully we'll get that resolved. Other than that, working with HM... Other than that, I'm working with HMS to try to transfer the senior program as smoothly as I can by July one. Had me several meetings with them. On the fire front, there's a couple fires in Grant County. One is the round fire started on June sixth, it's about thirteen hundred acres, and it is in the wilderness Ranger District. The other one is a straw fire, it's about a hundred fifty-eight, because it started June tenth, and that's in the, I'm sorry, the round fire's in the Aldo Leopold Wilderness and the straw fire's in the Ranger District Wilderness. So that's about it, unless you have any questions for me.
Questions for Randy? Officer. Nisha?
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner. So first on my list was to talk about North Hurley, but Earl already discussed it. Tukasa is second. The road is to subgrade. The parking lot, the last report I had was to subgrade on the west side. Water and sewer piping is in place, the electrical and communication runs are to the site, white sands is prepping for the PNM transformer, footings were prepped, rebar was in place for concrete, and the plumbing has been roughed in. So we've had some significant improvement going on at Tukasa. LS Mesa, the contractor, last we met with them, was hoping to have completion before the end of June. While we were sitting here, I did see an email come through from ASA, our architect, and they did approve an extension to June fifth for substantial, I mean, July fifth, sorry, for substantial completion. That may affect some of what Randy has going on. But the exterior stucco is complete and the tape and texture was complete, and they were set to begin wiring and all the electrical on the inside of the building. San Diego Fire Station, we are having a pre-construction meeting this Friday, so we'll get started on that with the contractor. For the ICIPs, all the public meetings are complete. However, I do put it out there that, you know, that one we advertised, we gave people notice, I went to several sites, we had the best people that showed up was in the member list, and that's because we tied it to their water association meeting, so we blindsided them a little bit, but they didn't give much input, but we had people there. So I do welcome the public's input, I am looking for you guys as commissioners to give me some input as to what you guys wanna see on that ICIP too, because we will need to get that in. You guys approve it prior to it being sent, but yeah, any information that you guys wanna send in on ICIP. And then I have the energy efficiency, which was just to mention about the resolutions that are on the agenda, and I already addressed it with Commissioner Brown about the fact that solar is still, is just incorporated in that, so. With that, any questions?
Questions for Nisha? All right. You have anything to say?
No, I have a prepared report, just business as usual in our office. One thing I would like to add, Randy mentioned the transition of the senior programs to HMS on July one. I just wanna defend HMS a little bit, they've been getting a lot of bad press and publicity based on the changes that are happening to be made to the program. These changes are a result of budget cuts from the state, and if we were going to continue with our program, we would be looking at the same type of changes. Other programs across the state are doing the same thing, and I just feel that people need to give them the opportunity, and I still stand behind them, that they are gonna do a great job with the program. And one other thing I'd like to mention, Mike mentioned seventeen special management inmates. That is, when we have that many special management inmates, that takes a lot of one-on-one observation, and so that is one of the issues that drive up our overtime costs. We've worked at trying to reduce that, but as long as we have that high a number of special management inmates, that makes it very difficult to control those costs. So just, just to make you aware that there's a correlation there, it's a big problem.
Okay. Similar problem at school, all of them are called meetings. I'm not going there. So I just wanna, one quick comment for the commissioners and, and the public. We did have a special meeting concerning the gravel pit, and I just wanna give you guys some clarification. In the press, it came out a little bit skewed that maybe we, we did some things differently, but the fact is, Freeport McMoran gave us that piece of property for consideration of ten dollars, and the deed, what it actually said was, and this is a stipulation in all their deeds, if we own any mineral rights, we retain them. Well, they didn't own them, so they couldn't retain them, they couldn't convey them because they didn't own them. So Freeport kinda took a, a black eye that day, and they, they didn't deserve it that day. They, they only were there to help, and we did not properly pay the state land office, and we are going to pay them, and we've made our deal, but please don't think that Freeport or their predecessor PD did anything wrong. They were actually doing us a huge favor at the time, giving us that piece of property for so little consideration.
Thanks for that clarification, I had to remember the if, that maybe.
Yeah, that it was said, though.
I believe it.
Okay. All right, anything else?
I do have one more question. Sorry to go back. Question for Earl. I saw DOT truck out surveying PA Road south of Thirty Second Street, and I just have a question. Does the county have any role in that project, which I believe is from McDonald's up to Thirty Second Street, or is that strictly DOT and town?
Strictly DOT and the town.
Okay, that's all, thanks. Anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Motion is second, all those in favor, sitting in private, say aye. Aye. Passes.